Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call to order our Thursday, April 26 Missoula Board of County Commissioners meeting. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So are there any public announcements today? I will...
I was just going to mention the board. Is that what you were going to do?
It was not, but go ahead.
Okay. So this weekend is Forestry Days at the Historical Museum at Fort Missoula. So it's always a fun activity, and it looks like we should have some nice weather.
So I would just like to say thank you to all of the well wishers and those of you here today or in the audience or in the community who offered encouragement over the past week. One week ago today, physicians at St. Pat's and the International Heart Institute discovered that my left anterior descending artery in my heart, which is otherwise known as the widow maker because when it is blocked, the chance of death is pretty high. It was 95 to 99 percent occluded. And after a couple stents, I am thankful that I am here today by virtue of modern medicine. But again, thanks to everyone and particularly the docs and staff at St. Pat's and the International Heart Institute. I guess I'd just like to leave with all of us today the idea that no matter how innocuous or easy to write off for other causes, the symptoms and signs of an onset of a heart attack or a coronary problem might be, don't risk it. Get it checked out because if I had not, I might not be here today in this lovely public hearing room. Finally, I would just say that as important as the agenda items are that we're talking about today may be to all of you in the audience or those in the community, it all pales in comparison to the simple yet profound gift of life that I think we all too often take for granted. So with that, to the more mundane things, unless there's any other public announcement. We'll get to public comment in just a minute. For folks who have not signed in, please do so. That helps keep track of the spelling of names as they, as folks come to the microphone and who's in attendance. If you have cell phones, please silence them and please keep your public comments today, either on non-agenda items or on items on the agenda, two, three minutes if you can. So with that, is there any public comment on items not on today's agenda? Mr. Richards.
Thank you, and I'm glad you're here, Dave. I had talked to you previously, and you suggested I come here, and I'm glad we're both here. Thank you. The, one of my comments is I would like to see the county departments communicate with each other because there's some waste and inefficiency going on between departments requiring owners to do the same things over and over. And once one department has that information, it should be shared with the others or at least communicate in some form. So I'd just make that comment. The other reason, the main reason I'm here was looking at designing a subdivision to alleviate the problem that the county had with me and solve the problem that I have with the county in doing a subdivision at Blanchard Creek. So there was a request previously to move the road easement on Blanchard Creek Road that had a public hearing that commissioners had looked at, that that was tabled, and I want to get a decision from the county commissioners whether I can move that road or not move that road before I design the subdivision and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars before that happens. So I'm making the request that the county commissioners rule on that previous petition to move that easement. Thank you.
So, Mr. Richards, I did ask staff to research where that was at. So we'll get a, we'll get some information to you probably next week or something.
Okay. It looked like it was possibly 2007.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. Is there additional public comment on items not on today's agenda? Seeing none, our current claims list, and this would be from April 5, 2018 to April 19, 2018, is $3,181,415. And for anyone who's interested in drilling down further into the particular items that make up that over $3 million worth of claims, if you go to the electronic packet for today's public hearing or any of our public meetings, you can click on the hyperlink that will allow you to view the vendor, the amount, and the description of what that expenditure was. So with that, we have five public hearings today, and the first of which is a public hearing that I will open on West Point subdivision extension request. We have a staff report from Jamie Erbacher.
Thank you, Dave. So this request is from Circle H Investments LLC represented by WGM. The request is to extend the phasing plan deadlines for phases four and five of West Point subdivision. Currently, phase four, so, and West Point's up here on the screen. It's just off of Butler Creek, Gooden Lane. But currently, phase four is set to expire on June 20 of 2018, and phase five is set to expire on June 20 of 2020. The requested extension is for both phases to expire by June 20 of 2021. So this request was reviewed according to the extension period for preliminary plats of the subdivision regulations, which requires agency notification and commissioner action. All subdivisions, no matter the date of the original approval, are subject to this review. The regulation allows extension in three-year increments. So at this time, the maximum extent possible for this request is out to June 20 of 2021 for both phases. So on May 23 of 2001, the commissioners approved West Point subdivision with 240 residential lots on 72.95 acres. It was subject to 32 conditions of approval and a phasing timeline. Over a series of different extension, or over multiple years, a series of extensions have been granted. Most recently, in 2016, the commissioners granted extensions and combining, or combining expired phases. Circle H Investments bought this subdivision, I believe, in 2015, and at that time, there were two expired phases, and so they combined phases two and three with phase four and extended the phase four deadline to June 20 of 2018 and phase five to June 20 of 2020. At that time, for West Point subdivision, there was also an improvements guarantee that was entered into with the county, and that was for improvements that needed to be completed in phase one that were not done prior to plating that subdivision. So as of right now, that agreement is set to expire on July 12 of 2018. However, WGM, Circle H Investments, and the county attorney's office have worked together to come up with an extension of that for an additional three years, so it would expire no sooner, or excuse me, no later than the proposed deadline for phase four and five. And so that will be coming before you for approval via the county attorney's office for that improvements agreement. So we did send us out for agency comments. Parks, Trails, and Open Lands noted that the master list of conditions needed to be amended to reflect the appropriate phasing deadlines since that phase two and phase three were combined into phase four. They also noted that the subdivision improvements guarantee either needed to be extended or the improvements completed. And as I just mentioned, WGM and Circle H is working with county attorney's office on that. Originally, we had contemplated a condition of approval to complete that agreement amendment, but since it's so far along, we decided that wasn't necessary. So staff is recommending approval of this extension, again, for both phases out to June 20 of 2021. None of the phasing boundaries will change. It's just simply the year. And then at CAPS update on Monday, Gene and Cola had asked about development that's happened since the last phasing plan extension was granted in 2016. Nick with WGM, he responded via email, so I'd just like to read that in for the record. For West Point, since the commissioners granted the last extension, two homes have been built by other builders. Butler Creek builders have built three homes, and three are ready for permits, and there are contracts on three more. In addition, they sold a lot to a contractor who will build a home, and the contract allows the sale of an additional three lots. Butler Creek Builders sells the homes in a price range from $389,000 to $470,000 for a model home. Most of these homes have been sold to young families. So again, this request is for this extension and also for the approval of the updated master list of conditions.
Thank you, Jamie. Does the applicant or applicant's representative want to speak to this?
Thank you very much, Commissioner Strohmeyer. For the record, my name is Nick Kaufman with WGM Group, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to attempt to answer them.
Thank you. We'll come back to you in just a second. Why don't you just stay right there? I highly doubt, I could be surprised, but does anyone in the audience want to comment on this particular item? This is a public hearing. Okay. Then I'll close the public hearing. Questions from the commission? Nick, I've got a question for you. So maybe this was explained in the kind of pre-public hearing meeting earlier in the week, but what's the reason for the number of extensions this has experienced over the past nearly two decades?
So the original developer, can you hear me with the microphone at that distance?
Yeah.
So the original developer of this property was Jay Razor, native Missoulian. His grandfather owned the stockyards, and this was part of his grandfather's property, which he and his siblings inherited. Jay started the idea of Circle H Ranch in West Point, and Jay was trained in architecture and did a pretty darn good job of the project. But he took on some partners, and the partners took on some loans, and Mr. Razor lost major control in subdivision to his partners. They went into financial default, and the property was picked up by another Missoula person, and it's Circle H Investments LLC. That's one Mark Brettz, who owns both Circle H Ranch where he lives and West Point now. So Mark is, lives in the neighborhood of the subdivision that he owns. So it didn't do much, Dave, to be honest with you, in initial phases, and then we had about a six-year recession, which all of us remember, not too easily, some of us. But when Mark bought it, he started afresh with this, and he hired a young guy named Andrew Wiggan, and Andrew has Butler Creek builders. And so Andrew has aggressively marketed this. They had a home in the parade of homes last year. We anticipate they'll have a home in the parade of homes this year. Gene asked the question at the Monday meeting, how progress was going. I think we're making great progress. If you followed what's happening with Matthew Driesen at De Smet School and his zeal to add additional homes and children to De Smet School, this is in De Smet School District, and so things we're doing today line up. The investments made in the project include the extension of city sewer, so there's no drain fields in this project whatsoever, and a public water system. So it matches the goals and objectives of the growth policy in place at the time and updated in your growth policy update in 2015. It seems to match the goals and objectives of the school district, and we've got a new owner developer who lives in the neighborhood, right, who's taking responsible charge in developing that subdivision in a very nice way.
Thank you. A question for you, Jamie. So, and I would offer to you, Nick, also, what's your sense of the legislative intent behind having time limits for final plat approval for subdivisions?
True.
As opposed to just completely open-ended?
Right. So when we redid the regulations in 2016, we actually added in some of those, you know, hard deadlines as far as when plats had to basically expire. Senate Bill 445, which was passed, that is only applicable to new subdivisions passed after the date of that adoption. So obviously, the intent is we don't want these just hanging out there forever. However, I do feel that our subdivision regulations do address this situation fairly well. By only doing three-year increments, that also gives the commissioners the opportunity to look at this again and say, well, we really think that you're, you're too far beyond the original date of approval. So that's, again, another reason why we put in that three-year timeframe.
Mr. Kaufman?
So Dave, as we, as we look at our community, and I'm going to spend just a tiny, not as much as James Michener would, but a little time answering your question. Missoula is the most compact major city in the state of Montana. Compared to the sprawl you see in Billings or Kalispell all the way to Columbia Falls and Whitefish, or Great Falls, or Helena to the north, or any community in the state of Montana, we're a wonderfully compact community. And the reason we're a wonderfully compact community is because we do good planning, and we do good capital facilities extension, and we implement our planning. And the developers in this community, because they're in an environment where they can rely on the decisions of local government, right, invest in subdivisions of hundreds of acres in this case. One of them, Circle H Ranch, is, is an open space development and very well and nicely designed. This one is a higher density development, but they invest in the extension of sewer, they invest in the extension of water, they invest in the subdivision review process, okay? You get subdivisions lend like Canyon Creek Village with a central park with homes all facing the park, or Windsor Park, or Hill Gate Meadows, or 44 Ranch Estates, or Williams at the Y, or in this case, Circle H Ranch at West Point, okay? Those developers in those communities cannot predict when recessions might hit, six-year recessions. They really can't predict how ownerships might change, right? But the investment in the design and the placement of infrastructure in these subdivisions needs to be protected. What we have now is a master plan with 32 conditions. Let's end that today, right? We have no conditions, and we have bare land, right? The only controls on it are zoning. Right now, we have a well master planned subdivision, right, with the investment in capital facilities and building tax base for the school that needs it in this particular case, one of the few subdivisions in Missoula County connected to sewer where you guys get the tax base. So we need to not be so, excuse me, concerned about timeframes for extension, but whether the decisions on those extensions match the goals and objectives of the community in the timeframe within which you get to make the decision on those extensions.
Thank you.
Okay, close the hearing, right?
Yep, it's already closed.
Okay. I would move that we approve the, do you have the thing all written out somewhere in here, Jamie?
Um, I do on the backside of the RCA, that last paragraph. You can just pull from there.
Sometimes they have things in there I forget to say. So just that last sentence, right?
Yeah.
I recommend that we approve the phasing plan extension deadline for phases four and five of West Point subdivision to be extended to June 20, 2021, and that the master list of conditions be adopted as proposed by staff in Attachment H.
I'll second that. Any additional discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Passes.
Thank you.
Yes. Our next item, somewhat similar to the prior one. I'll open a public hearing on Circle H Ranch subdivision extension request. Jamie?
Thank you. So moving north, just off West Point is Circle H Ranch. Again, Circle H Ranch Investments is the owner, represented by WGM. Circle H Ranch subdivision was originally approved on November 23 of 1994, containing three phases and 12 conditions of approval. Phase one was filed on November 19 of 1996. Phase two and three had a final plat approval deadline of November 23, 20, or 2002, but an extension was granted for that in December of 2002 for both phases. A second extension request was granted for phase two and three on December 15 of 2008, extending the deadline for phase two to November 23 of 2012 and phase three to November 23 of 2016. The deadline for filing phase two expired, however, in 2016, Circle H Investments received approval to combine phase two with phase three and modify the filing timeline for phase three. Their proposed changes set the deadline, the filing deadline for phase three at November 23 of 2018. So this request is to extend that the maximum three years out, so the filing deadline would then become November 23 of 2021, and staff is also recommending approval of this.
Thank you. Mr. Kaufman, do you want to speak to this, too?
Thank you, Commissioner Strohmeyer. We're developing a pattern here. And so, once again, I'll be able to ask questions, should there be any, from the commission.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there any public comment on this extension request? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions from the commission or motion?
I would move that we approve the phasing plan extension for Circle H Ranch to November 23 of 2021.
Motion's in order. I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our next item, I think we have someone calling in for this. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'll let you deal with the logistics of that.
Yeah, if you want to call him.
This is Casey with Missoula County Planning here. We have you on at the county commissioners' hearing. You are over the speakers here, so the commissioners, as well as anyone in attendance today, can hear you. Can you hear me okay? Okay, perfect.
So hello out there. This is Commissioner Dave Strohmeyer. We also have Commissioner Gene Curtis here with us today. I will go ahead and open the public hearing on the Garnet View Lot subdivision phasing plan extension request, and we have a staff report from Casey Drayton.
Sure. Casey Drayton here with county planning to provide this staff report for the Garnet View Lot subdivision phasing plan extension request. The applicant and on the phone with us is Nathan Smith, the property owner. Garnet View Lot subdivision is located just east of Potomac. This is off, you take Hole in the Wall Road to Camus Road to Garnet Court to get to the subdivision from Highway 200 that you can see cutting across the screen there. The subdivision is composed of two existing lots in the proposal. What that received preliminary plat approval was for four lots, so each lot would be subsequently split into two. You can see Garnet Court there, dead ends into these two properties today. There are a handful of existing homes on the property that you can kind of see in that shot there. The preliminary plat for the subdivision was approved on April 9, 2008. A phasing plan was then approved on August 15 of 2011, and an extension request to that phasing plan was approved most recently in May of 2016. That took the deadline for phase one and phase two to April 9, 2018. Phase one and two previously had separate filing deadlines back in 2016. They were both combined to one filing deadline, treating this more as just a traditional preliminary plat instead of a phased development. So that deadline was April 9 of this year. Nathan submitted the extension request to us on April 5, 2018. The extension request was submitted to county agencies for comment. There were no comments of note or concern that were received. As I mentioned, this was a four-lot subdivision. This was the original preliminary plat because it was about 10 years ago that this was approved. We've lost a real clear version of the PDF, so what you see here is about the best resolution we have right now until a final plat submittal comes in. The request in front of us is to extend this phasing plan submittal deadline by one year, so taking both phase one and phase two to April 9, 2019. Phase two is to the north on the northern property of this development, which has lots one and two. Phase one has lots three and four, so a little bit backwards from what you might think. But staff is recommending approval of the phasing plan extension, extending both these phases by one year to April 9, 2019. There is more information. There was some condition amendments and things regarding weed management that have transpired over the years, and all of that information and the approvals are included in the packet which you received. You also received the request that Nathan Smith provided to us on April 5. She has a cover letter detailing the reasoning behind his extension. He points to having trouble getting the subdivision improvements in because of winter weather, as well as a few other reasoning, and pointing to the fact that he believes he's getting close to a final plat approval, which is the reason he only needs one year to bring us his final plat submittal packet. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions from you.
Thank you, Casey. Mr. Smith, would you like to speak to the extension request? This is a public hea-
I have one question for you.
Okay, go ahead.
So, Mr. Smith, did you get your weed management plan done from the last extension? Did you get? Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there any public comment on this subdivision extension request? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional questions from the commission or motion?
I would move that the Board of County Commissioners grant the extension to the phasing plan deadline for Garnet View Lot subdivision based on the staff report and public testimony, of which there was none.
Okay, I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thanks, Nathan.
Okay, our next item is to continue a public hearing that we opened on March 22 and left open to address some public comment and concerns that came up during the public hearing and subsequently. And this is to amend Chapter 8 of Missoula County subdivision regulations. We have a staff report from Jenny Dixon.
Thank you, Commissioner Strohmeyer. Just to kind of bring you up to speed from when this first went to public hearing in March, the proposal before you is a request to do maintenance amendments to Chapter 8 of the subdivision exemption, subdivision regulations, which are the exemption regulations. And those maintenance amendments, when we had the public hearing in March, encompassed about 10 to 15 maintenance issues. Maintenance is really kind of a step above housekeeping, but not a full-blown update. And it's something that we had committed to do when we amended the regulations in November of 2016, that we would keep an eye on how the legislature changes laws relating to exemptions, as well as any kind of improvements that the public, as they go through these exemptions, make note for us, and we see ways to make these improvements. So in March of this year, the public hearing really focused on these 10 to 15 maintenance amendments, and I'm just going to touch on- amendments, and I'm just going to touch on them just as a reminder that they are still part of this proposal. That would be to expand the definition of agriculture to, in this context, include timber and wildlife management areas, adding some general evasion criteria, asking if the property had been previously subject to a pre-app or scoping meeting, and remembering also that generally evasion criteria are not a one and you're done. They kind of put together a picture of potential evasion, and so it's not as if one of these would make it impossible to proceed with an exemption request. We also added some detail under the general evasion criteria related to development pattern. We moved rebuttable presumption from family transfer only to a general evasion criteria, which asked, could the division be accomplished by a different exemption that would be more appropriate for the intended use? We clarified that these regulations apply to all exemptions, including those approved prior to November 2016, and I have some more detail on that as something that we have since made some revisions and refinements to. The original proposal also allowed reusing mortgage exemption surveys in certain situations. It included a legislative amendment to mortgage exemptions, which is already current county policy to not require, to allow tracks that were conveyed prior to October of 2003 to not have to go through exemption review if they're mortgage exempt tracks, to allow for site plan and condo exemptions to deviate from approved subdivisions plans as long as they complied with zoning, to revise the boundary line relocation exemption so that it would generally prohibit creation of an additional buildable tract. And that's kind of a broad way to say what the regulations actually are stating there is that if a boundary line relocation results in a tract of 320 acres or greater, that is a potential additional building tract because you could divide that tract without any kind of review. Again, rebuttable presumption. It doesn't mean you can't do it. It's just something that you can look at as a potential indication of evasion. Clarifying that the family transfer, deed of transfer to a minor can be accomplished through the Montana Uniform Transfer to Minors Act and not simply through a setting up a trust. Revising some submittal requirements and requiring surveys of remaining tracts less than 160 acres unless they can be described as a 1/32 or larger adequate part or US government lot. And I do have a little bit, nothing has changed with that proposal, but that was a topic of discussion at the last hearing, and I did meet with some folks in the intervening time to discuss that. To require the date of the family transfer approval on surveys, deeds, other instruments of transfer so that it's clear when the two-year holding period expires for family transfers, to include exceptions to allow for the revision of grantor and recipient in certain situations, and finally, to clarify that the two-year holding period for family transfers only expires if the commissioners grant an exception that allows or authorizes a sale or transfer of an exempt tract that, to a separate owner than was on the family transfer approval. So those were the topics that we discussed at the last hearing. The hearing on the, let's see, it would be the 22nd. We received testimony from a few individuals, in particular Chris Johnson and then also some staff at TLI. We, I was able to meet with TLI. I didn't get to communicate directly with Chris, but did, as you may have seen last week, sent out a mass email to our large list of folks to send a copy of the proposed revisions that we have currently before you and have not received any comment, though that does not mean they won't have any, but haven't heard any concerns at this point. The three areas I want to touch on today that are probably the most substantive, that are new since May 22nd, have to do with the kind of retroactive application of these regulations. And the way we explained this at the last hearing is that the intent of that, because an exemption has already been approved, there's, it was certainly not the intent to go back and apply evasion criteria or submittal requirements and that type of thing because those exemptions already were approved. But it wasn't, it caused some concern and wasn't clear. So as a result, I did include on page, in Section 8.5, and on my draft, it's page 8-5. So it's Section 8.5, exemptions generally, and it had some new language in letter A of that section, but now hopefully you're looking at the yellow highlighted version shows new language since the March 22nd hearing. And what I did was keep the same language that says that these regulations apply to approved exemptions prior to November 4th, 2016, except for the following sections. All right? And for the benefit of the audience, I want to go through what those six sections are that will not apply to previously approved exemptions. That would be, of course, general evasion criteria, the two-year holding period for family transfers, all of the rebuttable presumptions and documentation required for application for each exemption type, all of the general submittal requirements for application, the exemption application review process, again, because that process has already happened. And then finally, there are two statements that are required to be put on the recording documents that I think was not the intent of this commission to require retroactively, and those have to do with the floodplain requirements with the application and the two-year holding period for family transfer. So all other sections of these regulations would apply, and those deal primarily with surveys, recording requirements, definitions, if it should crop up, and we need that kind of thing. So hopefully that clarifies it and gives some level of comfort for the, for the folks who work with this document. The other section I wanted to bring your attention to is the remaining tract, in the sense that we did not make any changes since our last public hearing. We've talked about it, staff, with some members of the development community, and I think it's, there could be some debate about whether the state law requires all remaining tracts to be surveyed. The ARMS seem to not require it, and I am actually not entirely sure what other jurisdictions in the state do, other than which is what I've kind of heard word of mouth, is that nobody's really looking at this. But it is definitely something that has created some situations in Missoula County that have caused increased costs to the taxpayers, and we want to try to get a handle on that. And so as a result, we are recommending that remaining tracts in exemption surveys that are less than 160 acres be surveyed. And this is not a section that would not, that is in that list of exceptions for retroactive And finally, we, based on comment, really good comment last, by the way, last month from the people, and it really helped make a better document, so really appreciate that. We had some comment from Chris Johnson regarding the condo townhome exemption, and there was a recording requirement related to, well, what he, what he had explained seemed more like a building permit code review. So we took a look at that and worked with Brent O'Connor and took that out of the recording requirement for condo townhome and put it as a statement on any of the transfer documents, and in this case would likely be the declaration for the condo townhome exemption. And that language says that prior to issuance of a zoning compliance permit, the owner shall have construction plans approved by Public Works by providing a geotech analysis and certified documentation from a Montana licensed professional engineer, that the project has been completed in accordance with the approved design standards and specifications of the Public Works manual, and it gives some examples. Not to make sure that the condo townhome exemption, when building permits are received by the county, that the road infrastructure is already in place and they're not trying to build homes where that has not taken place. So there are a few other changes in here. I'll just note a few. I don't believe Shira's here today, though. She gave some revised language in the boundary line relocation and aggregation exemptions relative to corrected deeds that I think has made some improvements, from what I can tell, and fixed some language in reservation of life estate based on comment from Chris Johnson again. So again, I really appreciate the time you've given us to take a look at this a little bit longer, and staff is recommending adoption of these with a motion in your request for commission action. The language is, in the motion, would allow for this new draft, which is attachments C3 through C5 in your board sync packet, but your motion does refer to attachment C as amended, and the record should show that it's this current draft with the yellow highlights. Also in your packet, if you didn't have a chance, the only other things that were new since the last hearing were two public comments, one from, or both of them, I believe, from TLI. So with that, I'll close the, I will end my presentation portion and be happy to take questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there any public comment on the proposal before us to amend Chapter Eight of the subdivision regulations? Don't be shy. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Chris Johnson. I'm an attorney with Warden Thane. I'm not here representing any particular client in this matter, although I do have a client base that does touch and concern this stuff in here. I need to apologize to, that I was not able to talk to Jenny before this, but I still have a major reservation about the way that the townhome exemption is being addressed. I know what, I know what they're trying to, the goal is trying to be accomplished, and it's fundamentally, and it's something that's required under the Unit Ownership Act. It's fundamentally to make sure that the townhome declaration, site plan, unit designs matches up as the same thing as building permitting when it's time for building permitting. The problem is that you're trying to do it as a one-size-fits-all. There's two ways that the townhomes can occur, and that I regularly see in these instances. One is that somebody goes in with a proposed plan that's all proposed, right? Nothing built, and you have the proposed plan first, building permitting follows. It's also entirely possible, and you see it on a number of instances, where the building permitting is issued first. In other words, if you have zoning for the area and you're going to build three buildings on it and the zoning permits is, then it's perfectly allowed to do it. You can go pull building permits for that. The buildings can be under construction, and then the townhome declaration comes afterwards. So in that instance, you're kind of making sure that the townhome declaration comports with building permitting. In the first scenario I described, you're making sure that building permitting comports with the townhome declaration, or that they're amended to reflect each other. The glitch on the proposed language that shows on page 8-33 is, so there's no, there's no objection to this concept that these things need to match up. It's how we go about getting there or ensuring that to the county satisfaction that these things do mesh. And this is, since it calls for language in there that says, prior to the issuance of the zoning compliance permit, that's supposed to go in the declaration. The problem is the, that the zoning compliance permit is issued and I have to have that when I go to record my townhome declaration. In other words, I go in with a proposed plan, here's the number of units, here's what they're going to look like, here's where they're going to be situated on the site plan. It gets reviewed for zoning compliance, and that zoning compliant permit is issued, and I have to have that for the clerk and recorder's office before I can record these things. So this language, the way it's set up here, said, prior to the issuance of that zoning compliance permit, being in the declaration doesn't do any good because it's calling for something in a declaration that I have to have when I record it anyway. Is that tracking?
If I could jump in, I had that same question, and the way, and I have to tell you, I struggle with this section immensely, condo townhome exemptions. So I have relied heavily on Jamie, who's really brilliant, and Brent O'Connor at the Public Works Department. The way it is explained to me is that we're not talking about that zoning compliance permit.
See, that's where, that's where the confusion lies in.
It's the zoning compliance permit for the first person who comes in.
The zoning compliance permit associated with the building permitting?
Yes.
That's what needs to be clarified.
Okay.
Because, again, in my other scenario where somebody starts construction on these projects, zoning compliance is the first building, my understanding is zoning compliance review is the first building permit review element, so it's the first thing they look at. A lot of times when I go in on these things and construction is already underway, my zoning compliant permit, at least in the city, for instance, is a no-brainer because they've already reviewed it, if that makes sense. So we're good to go. The building permit's been issued and that zoning compliance has already gone through review.
Thanks. So Jenny, do you have a simple textual fix that would address that?
Well, so if we added, in that very beginning, if we set, I'm wondering if this will address your concern, prior to issuance of a zoning compliance permit associated with the first building permit, the owner shall have construction plans, meaning the owner who's submitting that first building permit. And I said, isn't that kind of putting a lot of burden on that first person? But that's the nature of these.
Well, and the other thing, that's a minor thing I wanted to be clear on. So that's okay, or, but we're back to the same complaint I had with the original one. In the building permitting end of things, having this requirement, if it's being done as townhomes under the Unit Ownership Act, having a building permitting requirement that says, hey, when you come in for your building permit under a, under a already existing filed townhome declaration, we're going to review and make sure it matches up with the existing townhome declaration, or in the alternative, you have to go back and amend it.
So again, the way this is explained to me is that the, well, let me see. The owner will come in with their building permit application with those plans, and this is simply a statement in the declaration. It's not a requirement for the exemption.
Right.
What it's doing, I believe, is, as I understand it from Brent over at Public Works, is that this, this little statement right here gives them authority to require compliance of their site plan with Public Works design standards. Does that make sense?
I'm back to apologizing again. I have no objection to the concept that building permitting and the townhome declarations need to match up. And again, I apologize that we were unable to meet up. I could, would be more than glad to come up with language that I think meets the obligations or the concerns that are expressed here, that would also mesh and gel with what actually happens in reality, and would address this twofold, this twofold direction which they could happen, in that, in that the building permitting could come first under certain scenarios, followed by a townhome declaration, and I could propose language that would also suck that up, too. There's, like I said, I keep coming back to, there's no objection to this general concept that, that the townhome declaration and the material claim therein needs to match up with what's issued for building permitting. And there have been issues, I like to think not on any projects I've worked on, where that issue's arisen in the city. And, and one of the things that I've even done when, when I talk to my clients, for instance, if they come in and they've got a, especially on smaller projects, and they've got a really firm building plan that they know, they've already, they may even, already started on building permitting, I know that nothing's going to change on this. Other clients come in and there's, and there's a distinct possibility of change. I actually changed the language and actually beef up the requirement that the, that the townhome declaration be amended to comport with building permitting, and that's a specific requirement I've actually put in some townhome declarations I've had. So the issue's out there, and I know it's a real issue. Again, I was initially concerned by the zoning compliance permit, which I look at as my thing that I need to go record the townhome declaration, and again, also point out that some of this stuff really is, is, again, perhaps more appropriately a building permitting issue than it is a subdivision exemption issue.
So this is not necessarily time-sensitive. Is, I guess one option would be to hold it open. Mr. Johnson, could you commit to meeting with staff before our next public meeting?
I will promise that I will meet with staff, and I will, I will submit a written proposal that I hope will satisfy the concerns, the valid concerns as far as getting these two things to gel or to match up.
Commissioner Curtis?
The other thing would be that, that we just adopt this, and then, then we only have to notice to amend that little piece, and we can come back and do that piece another day?
Potentially, except, you know, I've got, yeah.
I mean, if we put in here so that we, we could amend today to be very clear that what we're talking about is not what you're recording at the clerk and recorder's office, and then- we're talking about is not what you're recording at the clerk and recorder's office, and then fine-tune the language.
Ms. Dixon?
I guess I would lean towards Jean's suggestion and remove 88611F, the proposed language, and let us work on that. And it may just have to be part of the next round of maintenance amendments, or we can bring it back if we come up with something. I know it's important, and if Chris and I can work together, we could bring it back as soon as possible, and we could, I don't know if we'd have to, if we announce it here that we can continue that part of the hearing to another date certain, or if we'd actually need to put it, you know, out for notification, but...
I just hate to have you have to explain all the other things that are here.
Yeah, I would like to be done with all of that.
Mr. Johnson?
I'm certainly more comfortable with removing this for the time being and adding it later than I am adopting this right now and with a promise that it will be amended later.
So, which section would we address later?
You would remove from this motion, Section 88611F.
88611F?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
I have a couple other issues if you...
Okay, sure. It's all yours.
While I'm here. One is that the 85A change, addressing the issue of ex post, the threat or the potential of ex post facto application associated with that provision, I've not, it's an issue I raised in the first review of this. I've not gone through these exceptions. This is a valid way to handle it. I've certainly not gone through these exceptions to see whether you caught up everything that might be objectionable. But it raises an issue that touches and concerns the subdivision exemption, again, that's just a point of clarification that I can't tell necessarily from the statute. But one of the criteria for qualifying in the county, and again, there's a big difference between qualifying for these things in, between city and county. One of the criteria for qualifying it within the county is that you're on property that is, was subdivided under the Subdivision Plating Act with specifically the contemplation of the townhomes be there. One of the issues I have on that is, and I don't know whether, I can't say whether there's any property in the county that meets this criteria at all, but let's say you had a subdivision, and it called for multifamily housing on three or four lots, and it was a condition of subdivision that it'd be a mixed use and that there'd be multifamily housing. Theoretically, theoretically, if you retroactively apply this, or somebody goes in to do a townhome declaration on that multifamily lot, it would arguably be prohibited under this because at the time that subdivision review from, let's say, five years ago or six years ago, at the time of that subdivision review, they were not contemplating townhomes. We had an issue early, early on in the process where we were dealing with a subdivision that was subdivided, of course, before townhomes were even contemplated under the Unit Ownership Act. The issue was, that's been treated in the past, is if it calls for multifamily housing, and it was reviewed, especially for sanitation review. If the subdivision was reviewed with this idea that, hey, there's going to be six or eight living units on this particular lot, this literally says if they weren't, if you didn't contemplate townhomes or condominiums under the Unit Ownership Act, it may not be permissible, even though it's a designated multifamily lot on that subdivision. I don't, you're not picking that up?
No.
Then maybe that's not an issue. But again, it's the, and I'll read you the provision that's in your...
Which one was it again, Chris?
We're in 8.6.10, and you're in subpart...
8.6, oh, I thought you said 8.5.
Well, no, no, I started on 8.5, but it's the ex post facto stuff. And then the example is, so again, I guess the basis is in the preamble to 8.6.1, it recites this stuff out of state law, that a division of land under the Unit Ownership Act...
8.1 is court ordered division. I'm sorry, I want to be following you.
Oh, I'm sorry, 8.6.10.
Okay.
I'm dyslexic.
Okay.
I dropped it.
Okay, 8.6.10.
Yes. So, they need be on land constructed, or on land subdivided after the subdivision, Montana Subdivision Plating Act, in compliance. But it goes on to be more particular in here in A1A to say that the subdivision approval expressly contemplated construction of condominium townhouses and/or townhomes, and the approved subdivision complies with parkland dedication. That's an extension, that's a little bit of an extension beyond what state law says.
Shouldn't be.
That they contemplated the townhomes. In the past, we've had, well, again, we've got the situation where if you had a pre-existing subdivision that was approved for multifamily, I'd suggest to you that if multifamily is otherwise allowed, that townhomes or condominiums under the Unit Ownership Act would not be violative of that original intent. But that's just...
So, that's Section 861, or 86101 is supposed to be a recitation of state law.
Okay.
And then 86101B actually takes it a step further, and I thought, addressed kind of what you're talking about, is that it doesn't actually have to conform to the site plan approved by the subdivision. We've added language that lets it conform to zoning as well.
Well, so it says the site plan contemplated, okay, so the site, and it depends on, maybe we're a definitional thing, we got an issue with site plan. It says the site plan shall not be different from the site layout contemplated in approved subdivision. Now, if you're talking with site layout, if you're talking about lots, right?
No.
See, and that's...
It's vague, because in a subdivision, someone may just say, oh, I'm thinking about putting condos on this lot.
Right.
Or townhomes. I don't know what it'll look like. Or, they will come in with a site plan, a layout for that lot, and because it's not defined, we've used language that's pretty nebulous, that, you know, if they actually had an approved, as part of the subdivision, a layout.
Right.
An actual buildings and all that.
Which they regularly don't. Is that my reflection?
Right, exactly. Which, so, we added language that, okay, if they don't have that, they can, or even if they did provide that layout, this new language is saying, yeah, that's all great, but if they're zoned, they can build up to their zoning.
Right. So, you don't need that, you don't need that site design at the time of subdivision review, if it's zoned, if you're in unzoned, you're saying that the subdivision application needed to be that specific to show actual unit designs and where they're located on your multifamily lot.
It's very, some people do, some people don't. I personally think that they, that if, they should, but how, but subdivision doesn't require them to submit a site plan for it.
Right, that's, Chris, that's kind of the point I was making, is it's not required on a subdivision.
Got to take some additional public comment and also move on to our items. Was there something else major that you said you...
Yes, there's one other, one other major issue I would touch and concern on. This has to do with the court ordered divisions, and I'd suggest to you that the proposed change in your regulations essentially sends the county up as a reviewing authority for court ordered sales, and I'd suggest to you that that's not authorized under state law.
What section are you referencing?
You are in, sorry about that, you are in Section 8.6.1.4 in the recording section.
8.1.4.
And it calls for what needs to be included when there's a court ordered division.
And what, and what was your comment about that section?
In subpart, so, what needs to be, well, one, in subpart B, you've got a sentence fragment there, and I suggested, when it says one of the following, it means one of the following should be included for recording.
Yeah, I actually caught that earlier and was going to suggest that.
So, one makes sense, certified copy of the order decree, right? You're going down to record your deeds effectuating the court ordered division. Court ordered, a copy of the order decree, sure. And then B, the documents must be issued from fourth judicial or county attorney approval. That's really not a problem. I assume that if somebody brought a court ordered from a different jurisdiction, entered that court decision in Missoula County, which they do, and there's also provisions in the statute for what happens if you got a piece of property that crosses county lines. You can bring the, you can bring the cause of action in either county is what it boils down to. But it's, you get to subpart 2, and it says that, to be able to file your documents effectuating your court ordered division, that an agreement between the landowner and the governing body, presumably Missoula County, has to be entered into and signed by the, I have no idea what that agreement is and what that references. I'd also suggest to you that it's overstepping in a resolution approving the transfer. This essentially is, you're setting the county up as a reviewing authority of a court ordered decision, and I'd suggest to you that there are major legal hurdles to that.
We review them all the time. We always say no comment, but we, we do, they do have to, they come to us.
Sure.
I think that's what we're referring to.
And this is, this is happening afterward. What the statute says that authorizes, it says before the court order is issued, the proposed decision is supposed to go to the county for opportunity to comment on it. This is essentially setting up approval, not comment.
Okay, thank you.
So, what should it be called instead of a different word than agreement? What should it say?
I'm not sure what that agreement is. The point is that the county, the way I read the statute is the county has the opportunity to comment on the proposed order division. Some obvious things come to mind. It's zone property, and the county looks at it, and they say, wow, this proposed division is creating a substandard lot per the zoning, you know? Dear judge, you may want to think twice about doing this, you're creating a substandard lot that nobody's ever going to be able to sell. Beyond that, beyond commenting and giving input to the court as the advisability of the decision, I think it's behooving on the county to intervene in the matter. If they absolutely outright object to that, it needs to happen before the court orders is issued.
John or Jenny, do you have any insight?
I don't, I don't have any particular insight, but I note that those three things that need to be provided, well, they're disjunctive. It's one of those three things. And it seems to me that in every instance, it's going to be a certified copy of the order and decree showing that there was a court ordered division. And so, I'm not...
So, because they're disjunctive?
So, I'm not sure that two and three ever come into play, and if, and if they do, I agree with Mr. Johnson that Missoula County itself doesn't have the authority to issue a court ordered division of land.
Jenny?
All I would say is, so this language came from Shira, and with Shira not being here today, I can't really speak to what her, the intent of this language is, but I would certainly be open and would welcome any revisions that John and Chris could suggest that would...
So, just a minute, Mr. Johnson. So, John, are you suggesting that two and three could be deleted from here, and it would not make any difference?
Just require attachment of, number one?
And I apologize. I should have noticed these two things before this hearing, and before I just say, yeah, let's just get rid of it, well, perhaps we should do exactly what we're, you're considering doing with the last issue, and just deleting two and three, and then we can talk with Shira later on and find out what she might have been thinking in proposing that language, and we can add that back in at a later time, understanding that even in my short tenure with the county, I've never seen anything but an order and decree, and so I don't see this as being an issue that might come up in the immediate future.
So, that's one approach. I would also say we may be reaching the point where if we're pulling out enough items to deal with, might it be worth keeping the public hearing open for a couple more weeks or so? Jenny?
Let me just check one thing, please.
Jean?
I would also think that we could take out fourth judicial district anyway, just to say a judicial district.
I guess I would certainly like to know what the clerk and recorder's office was thinking by this language.
So, about the stuff that we're doing with Gleneagle, that's all court ordered. Could that be something that would be a court ordered agreement?
Well, Glene, the issues involved with the Gleneagle litigation is not technically a court ordered division under 76-3-201.
Right, because this is exemption.
It's certainly involving a court in all sorts of issues involving land and divisions of land and things like that.
So, maybe she's trying to roll them all into this.
Jenny?
So, up until now, the only recording requirement under court ordered exemption are transfer documents must accompany the recording of the division, and court orders are still happening, and there haven't been problems with it. So, I would still like to try to stay on the track of approving, of making a motion on this, these amendments, minus that Section F that we talked about earlier, and in this case, make a motion to delete B, because we've lived with it for 30 years that way, and we can add it in the next go around of maintenance amendments.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris.
B, and then there was, wasn't there three things, though?
Delete B and pull out the 88611F for hearing later, date to be determined at a later date.
And so, by deleting B, that takes off the table one of my editorial concerns that Mr. Johnson also brought up. Yeah. Okay, is there any additional public comment on this particular item? Come on up. I knew I could entice someone else to the mic.
Thank you, John Richards. With the exemptions, you're talking about surveying the remaining piece, and I'm not sure that the commissioners know the cost of that. But I talked to the surveyor because I wanted to know what it was in my proposed subdivision. They're talking $10,000. And just to throw that in there and say, oh, we're going to put an additional $10,000 on the developer, it's not on the developer. You guys need to understand, whatever goes on the developer goes on the buyer. And you wonder why housing is so expensive in Missoula County. It's because of all the hoops that you have to jump through to get through subdivision review, and then the houses cost astronomical amounts. It's, I started out, I bought the ranch at Clearwater, 2006. It's been 12 years. I have no subdivision there. I've been trying to do it. The recession hit, I stopped for a while, but every one of these regulations you throw up just runs the cost up. I'm trying to build a working person subdivision, people that work for me, that work in either Missoula or Sealy or Vando, Potomac, in those areas, that can afford to live in a house at a reasonable price. And all of these regulations just add cost. Every, you know, one sentence, survey the remainder.
This is the exemption section, though. This isn't subdivision.
We're talking about surveying the remainder section.
Right, and less than 168.
$10,000, just boom. That's $10,000 you're putting on a buyer, not on me, not on the developer. The developer always passes the costs along.
But the costs get passed along anyway, because the person that's, might buy that extra, that lot that's left, the remainder someday, is going to have to have that surveyed because it's not described anywhere. That's what we're trying to get at.
It has a legal, yes, it's described. It has a legal. Lots sell all the time without surveys.
And somebody ends up surveying.
Thank you, Mr. Richards.
Okay, my other comment is related to making the regulations. You're changing all this stuff in the regs, you add this sentence. I raised that issue after being at the other public hearing today because I asked how much that costs, and it was scary to survey. So, my comments about that section, maybe you change that at some point. Maybe you just need to continue the public hearing to get all these things ironed out ahead of time. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Jenny, just to be clear, the language related to surveying the remaining parcel is relative to divisions of land exempt from review under the Montana Subdivision and Plating Act, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Additional public comment? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Any additional questions or a motion?
I just want to be clear from Jenny first, that, so we want to delete 8.6.1.4B.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And the other one was 8.8.611F?
Yes.
So, I would move that we, from the materials that were presented to us today, that we delete two items to be addressed at a later date. Section 8.8.6.11F and 8.6... Section 8.8.6.11F and 8.6.1.4B.
I'll second that. Any additional discussion? And I'd just like to thank staff and members of the public for all of the comment that's been provided. I think this will be a much better and stronger document because of it. Go ahead and vote, all in favor?
Aye. And then we need to do a motion for the whole, that was just the amendments, right? So now we do, now I'll do the, I move that we adopt the resolution shown in attachment J to amend Chapter 8 of the Missoula County Subdivision Regulations entitled Divisions of Land Exempt From Review Under MSBA/PA. With the maintenance amendments to Chapter 8 exemption regulations as shown in draft 2, attachment C as amended today.
I'll second that. And if I neglected to already, I had meant to say the public comment, or the public hearing was closed after the final public comment. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks for all your-
Last but not least, I'd like to open a public hearing on the draft fairgrounds design guidelines and draft schematic plan. And the public comment period will open now, but we'll reconvene on May 17th for hopefully final adoption. So with that, we have a staff report from Emily Bentley and you can introduce anyone else that you want to, to help you present.
Sure. Thanks so much, Commissioner. Welcome back. So these design guidelines that we're proposing for the fairgrounds, we've been working on them for about a year, as you know. I know this is a little repetitive for you, but I'm just going to quickly go over our mission and mantra. We always like to say, you know, our mission at the fairgrounds is to promote agriculture, education, culture, recreation, community connection, and to reflect the beauty and history of western Montana. And that mission was adopted by McFAC a few years ago. And then the mantra that we always talked about, talk about, and Commissioner Strohmeyer spoke about at the state of the community a few weeks ago is, the fairgrounds is really a nexus between the urban and rural. And so it's a physical space that embodies the diversity we find in Missoula County itself, connecting our rural heritage with our urban vibrancy, midtown with the neighborhoods and tradition with innovation. So with the planning process complete at the fairgrounds, these design guidelines were developed to identify the function, intent, and character of specific design elements with the goal of ensuring consistent, high-quality design and clear expectations as the fairgrounds are renovated and redeveloped. Starting last June, we held a series of workshops with stakeholders to begin designing the look and feel of the fairgrounds. Last August, during the Western Montana Fair, there was an interactive booth for community members to express their design preferences. And unlike the planning process, which focused on which uses would go where, design guidelines are focused on style. Concurrent with the design guidelines, we began preliminary design development, including schematic design of the fairgrounds. We did a study of the existing ice rinks, which is wrapping up. And in collaboration with the county weed district and county extension office, we started design, preliminary design on the new learning center. So the resulting schematic plan refines the site layout and provides additional detail for site circulation, parking, landscaping, building locations, and utilities as a template for final design of the individual projects. So planning and design at the fairgrounds, like I said, included an extensive public process and stakeholder outreach dating back to 2008. But the design guidelines were developed with input from stakeholder workshops and public comment received at the fair, like I just said. Here's some of the documents. So with the stakeholder workshops, we, oops, sorry, with the stakeholder workshops, we gave stakeholder, we toured the fairgrounds and we went through and we talked about, we got really into the weeds about, you know, fencing and what will work where. And we had to have all of our stakeholders really weigh in on that type of stuff because it is so intricate. And then here are some pictures from the booth at the fair at the bottom. And so we have a, put together a survey to solicit public comments for the next month. So the action in front of you today is to present this public draft of the design guidelines and schematic plan and open the public hearing. And then the survey, which is available at missoulafairgrounds.com/future, will be open for the next few weeks until May 4th. And then the public can, you know, as always, come to your public hearings to provide comment that way, of course, or by emailing bcc@missoula county.us. So the comments that we receive over the next few weeks, we will, we will take a serious look at and incorporate as we think appropriate and come back to you with a recommendation for final adoption on May 17th. And so, you know, you're also welcome to comment today or weigh in or, you know, over the next month. So here's the new schematic plan that we're presenting. The big major changes are, the ice rink study found that there was not sufficient space in the northwest corner of the grounds to expand the existing facility. Several building options were explored during that process, including modifications to the existing facility, but those were found to be inefficient to construct and operate. And so the final recommendation is going to be a new facility in the southwest corner of the grounds. The second major change is that to better connect the learning center to the exterior of the fairgrounds and incorporate a butterfly house and insectarium, that building was moved north to actually front South Avenue. So that building is, where's my mouse here? Right here. Here's the ice rink down here. And then to reduce utility costs, the maintenance building was moved from this corner of the grounds, was moved to, out of the southeast corner so that we could reduce costs for sewer and water infrastructure. There was really no need to run the mains all the way out there just for that one building. It saves us about $150,000. So we moved that over also. And so the project aesthetic for the design guidelines provides overall guidance for the visual and functional design of the entire grounds. The fairgrounds project aesthetic is expressed through five characteristics that reflect the mission of the fairgrounds. So we took our mission and we wanted to look at it, we wanted to look at design through a lens that reflected our mission. The five characteristics are legacy, agriculture, tradition, community, and innovation. And so these characteristics express the physical character and vision for the fairgrounds and provide design inspiration for textures and colors, patterns, architectural forms, and materials that can be incorporated and interpreted in the detailing of the building and the site elements. So the individual characteristics will be emphasized in different areas and different projects, but all the characteristics will hopefully be represented throughout the fairgrounds to provide unity and cohesive design. So with that, I'm going to pass it off to our architect, Paul Filicetti from A&E. And he's going to discuss some of the work we're doing on the historic buildings and then the preservation work we're doing on the historic buildings and then also the design guidelines for the new buildings. And then when Paul is, after he wraps that up, Jeremy Keen from WGM Group is going to discuss the site landscaping and trails and the site work and the site design. So Paul, do you guys have any questions before we move on? Okay.
Thank you, Emily. And thank you all for being here and allowing us to go through this presentation. So three components that kind of developed out of the plan, this one here to the right, then I'll look at. The three stages of, or three areas we identified, kind of an urban interface group where the buildings front the major arterial streets of the grounds. And the architecture of those is, would be different than a historic building group, which is the buildings we're all familiar with out of the fairgrounds. That would in turn be different from an agricultural building group that's kind of in the back, kind of southeast side of the grounds. And so I'll go through, go through those as we kind of proceed here. In terms of the historic preservation side, then, as you know, it is a national historic registered district, 46 acres, 23 contributing structures and sites on the grounds. In the process of the redevelopment of the grounds, there's a significant impact to those historic improvements, or there's a significant impact to the historic grounds by improvements to the grounds. But with the idea that what we touch will be a soft improvement to try and maintain as much of the historic character or restore the historic character that was originally on the grounds. So that's in part the process. The design guidelines then seek to promote and maintain the social and cultural heritage of the fairgrounds, which includes recognizing the traditions and community fairs, historic context, and organization of the buildings on the site, and as well as interpreting those, the information from those buildings, interpreting those in, as we look at improvements on the grounds, interpreting the loss of whatever we come about, for instance, the track, and interpreting that element. And accounting for the overall interpretation of the grounds in terms of common themes, geographical location within Missoula, Missoula County, and in periods of construction for the buildings. We recognize the significance of the historic use of the site by preserving historic cluster of buildings, which you see in the slide here as the green buildings. And we're looking at that as kind of the major focal point on the ground to be the takeoff point for all the new design on the rest of the grounds. The emphasis would be towards open space in the carnival grounds while providing interpretation and education, historic use of the site. So interpretation is a strong theme that we're going to use throughout here. Please forward.
Just click it.
Thank you. So in terms of the historic preservation side, then, historic buildings in the fairgrounds are simplistic, agricultural, and represent the craftsman style. That is, in terms of architectural character, it's commonly identified as the craftsman style of architecture. The preservation of those characteristics is a key component of the future of the grounds and certainly in the retention of these historic buildings. And maintaining that kind of legacy that we're all familiar with and character defining features of those buildings that we're familiar with on the grounds. So that's a priority. Preserving those historic building groups is estimated to cost around $6 million and is scheduled to begin construction soon. And using the fairgrounds special district as a means for redevelopment. We're hoping to break down on those in the next few weeks. Some of the other renovations will include, or renovations will impact operations and change in design and materials and character defining features. I'm sorry, they will avoid those alterations to the character defining features of the building. So for instance, now if you're a walk around the historic buildings, there's aluminum siding on the building. So the idea is to remove some of those nonhistoric elements and return the historic character of the original architecture of the building. In that process, we'll be looking at the Secretary of Interior Standards and how they work with, in terms of preservation and new development within that historic building group. And then maintaining the original color and color scheme that is on the buildings. The green and the white, while they may be characteristic defining features of the buildings that we all are familiar with today, they may not be the, that green may not be the original green. So we'll do color analysis to make that determination as we kind of go through the process. And certainly, we'll be looking at the use of materials that are appropriate to the craftsman style, predominantly wood, and replacement materials that are consistent with, or inconsistent with the craftsman style, such as the siding and the metal roofs will come off and the original, or in similar modern materials to those original materials will be installed. Repair the historic windows, we'll be looking at that. And fire sprinkler systems, of course, ADA and ABA access will be a prominent component of all the building renovations, including an elevator and/or lifts in those buildings. And then, of course, new utilities. We're talking, each building, a historic building would have new water, sewer, gas, and electrical service, as well as mechanical, potentially mechanical systems to increase the span, or usable span of the buildings to more of the swing seasons. In terms of the maintenance building, then, you all have received the report and kind of an analysis there. So we came up with four, five options there. Adapt and reuse of the cold storage, reuse the building as cold storage, deconstruction and demolition of the building, mothball the building in place, mothball the building, and move it to another location off the fairgrounds, and then mothball the building and move off site. I'm sorry, move it to another location on the fairgrounds, not where it's currently at. And then the final one would be move off site. The two that we're kind of recommending are the deconstruction and demolition and/or the mothball and move off site. The deconstruction, demolition, you can see the costs there on the screen, and it just kind of works well with, in terms of the future planning and process for the weed district building, this building starts to, the two do not work well on the site. While they may, in the schematic design drawing that's presented in here, it appears as if the weed district building works well with that, could potentially work well with the maintenance building, the current existing maintenance building. That may not be the case as we go down that road further. The maintenance building starts to butt into the south backside of the new, new learning center building. As Emily mentioned very briefly, that the learning center building is now kind of expanded to include the weed, or I'm sorry, includes the weed district offices, but includes now the butterfly house and insectarium, which is, the overall square footage of that building has increased significantly because of that shared use, which you'll be seeing that later on in the next coming months, more information on that. But know that that building has gotten a little bit bigger than what's shown on the plan, and consequently, the deconstruction and demolition of the maintenance building is the primary recommendation. The secondary recommendation would be to mothball and move it off site. So those two would be the option. In terms of, in terms of the planning, original planning process that we went through, that the maintenance building was kind of, we didn't look at that when we were dealing with McFAC. So it was never part of the master plan of the schematic plan, that earlier master plan and now part of the, it is not part of the schematic plan we developed. So then in terms of new buildings, these are the buildings that are, you see on your screen in orange. And again, we're looking at the, on the north side of the site, it'd be the weed district building, the learning center commonly called, up in the upper right-hand corner. Building 35, which is home arts. And then the new exhibit building, which essentially sits where ICE is now. And then the new ice rink down on the southeast corner of the site. In the design guidelines, we've grouped the existing and new buildings on the fairgrounds into similar use types. By grouping the buildings' architectural features will reflect, in essence, what we're attempting to do is have the architectural features reflect a common use or common identity that becomes a wayfinding device on the grounds as well. So as I mentioned earlier, there are three distinct building types in the fairgrounds, historic building group, the agricultural building group, and the urban interface building group. So this, the buildings in the orange here then are the urban interface, what we're considering the urban interface building group. And each of these then would have an identity that reflects the craftsman style, but yet is still independent and of their own time and period. So with that in mind, we'll start with, kind of go through the agricultural building group, which, if I go back, I don't know how to go back. I'll just move forward then. So the agricultural building group, which includes the livestock building and the rodeo grounds. Those two buildings, again, the idea is they pick up on craftsman style elements, they reflect the elements of the historic building group, but are of their own time and period and do not take on, the idea is not to mimic or in any way take away from the focal point of the fairgrounds, which is the historic building group. So the new architecture takes on its own language and development. So in the agricultural building group, takes on some of the craftsman style characteristics, if you can see in these images, but in a new and modern way. So we're looking at innovative design ideas to, for buildings of the agricultural type to redefine and reestablish the legacy of the fairgrounds and it's within the community. So in these examples, again, they use the kind of modernist craftsman style forms, shapes, detailing, repetitive patterns, extended elements, root forms that would be characteristic of that style. Just to go into a little bit more detail then, in terms of that modern craftsman style look, there is certainly an ex- look, there is certainly an accentuation of the horizontal patterns that are already established in historic building groups through the surface materials, which will become much more evident when we take off the aluminum siding. And those exteriors, exterior materials really reflect the agricultural, agricultural design intent of those original buildings. The new buildings then would be modern in an authentic way of their own style, but still sympathetic to the original. In this case, here are some examples of windows and doors, both a modern and sympathetic styles that we're looking at developing. So on the left there, the top one, you can see the interior of the commercial building. And on the right, just immediately right there, is a large fan and clear story windows. So the new architecture could take on an image, take on characteristics from the older architecture, but would, again, be of its own time and period. In the lower left hand slide, you see a large oversized window opening on a very modernist looking building, which again is divided into smaller windows and patterns, which then pick up on that idea that, as you see in the commercial building window, which is a curved window there on the right, again, a large overscaled window on the existing buildings that can be used to help us find language for the new architecture. On the far right, there are three examples of different types of doors. Certainly, as we look at the commercial culinary buildings, those large openings, they were all familiar with, going to be looking at those in terms of being able to, and now that we're going to heat the buildings, want to provide some sort of windbreak between the interior and exterior, so looking at ways to create a modern aesthetic within there, so, within the realm of the historic preservation, so that, again, one of the Secretary of Interior Design guideline things is, as you look at historic buildings and add modern features to them, you make a distinction between what's historical, or what's original to the building and what's modern to the building or new to the building. So we'll be taking that into account. The bottom right hand corner is an image which may show up better on your screens, but it shows that aluminum storefront window system, kind of set within the opening of an historic building, we're looking at something like that in terms of the commercial and culinary building. So again, in this case, the windows and doors, those repetitive patterns, the ganged window units, clear story windows, the emphasis to entry and the sequence of the buildings using glass and larger scale windows to identify entry points. Certainly, the abundance of natural light will be a component, large picture windows and entrances that provide multiple points of ingress and egress to the buildings is going to be a design criteria. As we look at the urban interface building group, then, that's the buildings that face the street. These would be the most modern buildings, if you will, on the site. And that's where we're talking about the ice rink, the weed district building, the butterfly house and insectarium, building 35 and the exhibit building. So these urban interface buildings are the new buildings immediately adjacent to urban environment in midtown Missoula and front the streets that bounding the fairgrounds. So they really are, here's an opportunity to really set the new tone for the fairgrounds about, as people drive by and really let them know that, hey, this place is developed. It's a new, it's a new space, but the characteristics are of its time and of its place and connect to the neighborhood, the immediate neighborhood in the area, which is relatively commercial development along the streets, and enhance that streetscape along Russell and South Avenue, and provide safe, efficient, welcoming multimodal transportation and means of transportation to the fairgrounds. So that is to say that the buildings are, one of the challenges we're faced with is there's no back to any of these buildings, unlike, you know, you usually think of a building having an alley, similar to this courthouse building. It's fronted on all sides from the public, so the public has access to the building on all sides. So you have to be aware of that. But in that treatment, the, we want to be cognizant that the way the building fronts the street is as equally as important as the way the building fronts the fairgrounds, because it does pose, it is the face of not only the building as, to the community in terms of its interaction to the street, but as well as what goes on during the Western Montana Fair and other events that will take place at the fairgrounds, the building needs to interact with that as well. So those are, those are really challenging design features that will be accounted for. And the idea that, again, that craftsman style, we have examples on the fairgrounds already, using the historic building group, that will take that, become elements of that as well. So that kind of, I think, is the urban, yeah, urban interface. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeremy, and he can continue on with the landscape. Do you have any immediate questions? All right, thank you very much.
The design guidelines give considerable attention to the site, because the fairgrounds has a lot of open space, and in designing the site to relate well with the buildings and tie in with the themes and designs of the buildings, we wanted to make sure the design guidelines spoke to that. So the fairgrounds will have over 19 acres of new open space that'll be available to the public, that's considerably more than what we have today. So the design guidelines look at how we treat things like trails and walkways within the fairgrounds, how the circulation will work, how we screen things that we don't want to have public view or pay a lot of attention to, how we create strategic view corridors to the things that we do want to see, like the historic building group in the center of the site, as kind of that focal feature. So we have, we've strategically identified corridors to look into the fairgrounds, as well as look out of the fairgrounds when you stand out there in the middle of those fields and you can see the mountains in all directions and really appreciate the beauty. And we think that this is important both for the way the fairgrounds functions as its own event facility, and also for the way it supports the kinds of activities that are happening around the fairgrounds in the midtown area. As that area develops and becomes more intense and dense in its use, this open space becomes incredibly important to make that work. So in the design guidelines, we looked at those five characteristics, the project aesthetic characteristics, and how those can be interpreted through landscape design, and how that will complement the various building groups. So we looked at landscape patterns around those five characteristics, the agricultural landscape, really thinking about how crop patterns and gardens work and kind of expressing those traditional elements of farming. In the traditional landscape, thinking about the Montana ranch pattern and the idea of ranch buildings that are set in a landscape of open fields and grounded by trees and plantings that are around the buildings that form windbreaks and kind of establish those building locations. Opportunities for innovation in our landscape design where we can incorporate sustainable techniques for things like water use, reducing water use for storm drainage, to minimize impacts on water quality, to reduce things like heat effect that we get from large paved areas. All those things can be incorporated into the landscape design through innovative techniques that really support that mission of the fairgrounds to be a place of education and innovation. And the legacy landscape type with the idea that this is the more formal, kind of manicured look that kind of complements the historic building group and the kinds of activities that go on around the historic buildings in, during the fair and also, you know, at other times of the year when you might have weddings or other kind of formal events and those, those nice lawns and kind of formalized planting areas, flowers and colors that really complement that kind of use. And then the community landscape, really the transition from the fairgrounds to that urban area around the fairgrounds, where we really look at using native plants and the kinds of plants we see in our open spaces around Missoula, as well as street trees and the kind of more urban landscape design that we see outside of the fairgrounds. So this provides that transition as you move, move out of the fairgrounds and into the urban area, that helps the two relate, but also provides kind of a buffer as you, as you come to the fairgrounds and transition into that space that's more rural and more reflective of the history of the fairgrounds. So Emily and her staff did a great job of putting together this survey, which really, I think, walks people through the design guidelines. It's a big document, there's a lot of information there. It's intended to be a tool for anybody that comes along after us and looks to design something on the fairgrounds, that we can use it to understand what the design should look like, and also if you're reviewing the design, have a tool to make decisions when we're getting down to the details of specific buildings or areas. So the survey kind of walks you through the design guidelines, it's an opportunity to kind of understand how the design guidelines will work and be used in the future, and hopefully is a good tool to get public comment on this. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there any public comment on either the fairgrounds design guidelines or draft schematic Any questions, Gene? Yeah, this looks like an extremely useful document. I wondered going into this what the design guidelines would look like, and I think this is going to be a great tool. I do have one question for Paul. Or Emily.
I'll pull up, I have a feeling where you're going with this, I'm going to pull up the
Let's see if she guesses where I'm going with this, I'm anxious to see. Ah, indeed it is. So Paul, might another option that occurred to me that's not listed here be simply to move offsite if there was a willing group or receiver of the building, and so mothballing would not necessarily have to be done? Or is that implied?
No, that, in any scenario that we presented, the idea in terms of moving, the idea was that mothball component really would either be mothball or structurally stabilize a building for a move, they'd have to, you know, do some stabilization. Chances are the building, we worked with DCI, BCE, Tombo-Dad for the structural side. But yes, the building would be cut up into different parts and be, have to be moved offsite and then reassembled. So that, the bottom price there, mothball and move offsite is probably very similar to what it would be if we just moved offsite, without mothballing.
And does that include site preparation at the location where it would be going or not?
It does not.
It does not, okay.
No.
Okay. I think that's all for now on that.
But it does, it does include the cost of moving the building, like, like...
Yes. So it includes...
Driving the building across town.
Within a certain radius of the location.
I think we said 15 miles, is what we looked at.
Okay.
And just to be clear, the, we don't, we don't have a preference between the two, between mothball, move offsite, or deconstruction and demolition, they, we would certainly, if there was a place to move the building to, I think that would be, that would be preferable to deconstruction and demolition. This schematic plan just does not contemplate any space for it at the fairgrounds, and we've, McFact talked about it, and Cole is not here, but McFact talked about it, and then we talked to Jerry about it and tried to make it work. It's just, we're not recommending keeping it at the fairgrounds, but if there was a place to move it, I think that moving it would be preferable to deconstructing it.
Thanks. And so I would simply issue the call to the community, if there is anyone out there who is interested in this building, and I agree, it is a major thematic element as far as the history of the fairgrounds, and if there is a way to save it and also accomplish goals of, of what we want to do at the fairgrounds within the parameters of the current master plan, that would be potentially a win-win situation. So if anyone's out there listening, there's a building that could possibly meet your needs. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Paul, the mothball and move to another fairgrounds location, that number is higher than the mothball and move offsite, because that does contemplate all of the site prep that would have to happen if it...
Yes.
Where it landed.
Yeah, that did account for the idea that there would be a new foundation, site preparation foundation, you know, potential utility infrastructure for future improvement.
That would give a good number for someone to anticipate.
Right, right. And we would be willing, certainly, I would recommend that the county contribute to moving the building and pay for that cost if we could...
Well, by the looks of it, it's going to be 100 grand to even deconstruct and...
Right. So it doesn't, it really is not much more to move it.
Okay. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
I do have a question for you, Emily. So since the schematic plan that we're contemplating here does deviate from the 2016 adopted master plan schematic, would we need to amend the 2016 master plan?
The action, the action will be to adopt, no, it wouldn't be an amendment, it would be to adopt the new, the schematic plan with the design guidelines. So it would...
Does it supersede?
Supersede the master plan, yes.
Okay, so that would, I guess I would have to look, Gene would probably have a better idea than I in terms of what was actually voted upon in 2016, but I'm just wondering if there would have to be any reference to that action in this?
In the, in the action?
In our eventual motion on May 17th to...
Okay, to supersede the, yeah.
Something, I don't know, something to recognize, lest we have kind of two, two items that are...
Yeah, I think the design guidelines do really lay that out, but I don't think it hurts to make it very clear to the public to have a very clear motion. And actually, we always sort of call it the master plan, the official, the red, you know, this plan here that we call the master plan, it's actually called the implementation plan. So, yes, the schematic plan will supersede, the action should be, I agree, that the schematic plan, adopt the design guidelines and a schematic plan to supersede the implementation plan.
Got it, thanks. Any questions, Gene?
So today, our action is just to, I mean, Dave opened the hearing, but so opening a comment period on both?
Yes.
And then the action will actually happen later. So do we have to make a motion, or did opening the hearing do that?
Opening the hearing did that.
Okay.
Okay. So the hearing will be open until May 17th, and we'll revisit it then? The survey is through May 4th, that's active, is that...
Yep, the survey through May 4th, and of course, people can always comment to the Board of County Commissioners or directly to me, but the easiest way to really get a sense of what's going on without reading the whole document, which, you know, is quite dense, is to go to the survey, which I will go ahead and just pull up that webpage, how about that? Because I think it's important that people...
While she's pulling that up, any additional public comment from folks? Yeah, go ahead.
So Emily, it is, it is a kind of a thick document, do we have, if folks want to, if they like to put their hands on stuff, are they available in different, at the library or at the fairgrounds for people to come?
Sure, yeah, there's a, there's a copy at the fairgrounds, people are welcome to come.
Okay.
That's a great idea, and we could put one at the library too if...
That might not be a bad idea.
Seems like a good idea.
Okay. Yeah, we'll print out a few more. So here's the Missoula Fairgrounds webpage, and you can see the survey is built in to embed it into the page, and there's 16 slides. And then you can also download the design guidelines here and this, you know, the rendering of the schematic plan here, and so the design guidelines, you can see, are 100 pages long. And one thing that I think is really nice in the design guidelines that really helps, will help in the future when interpreting them, because it's really a reference document moving forward, is like, let's say, you know, the, you know, if you're building the learning center, you can go to the learning center butterfly house and just come across and see, okay, the, you know, the dark circles are the, you know, the primary attributes, and then the open circles are the secondary, so you can say, okay, what applies to the learning center? So the building group is primarily an urban facing building group, but it might, you know, it's also going to have some secondary features of the agriculture because of its mission. And then the landscape type is going to be the agricultural, but then also, you know, it's facing the street, so there'll be some community and some innovation because its mission for, you know, education, and, so, you know, it's just, it's easy to, this really helps tell people how to use the document and how to jump to the various sections that apply to them. And so, you know, we've really put a lot of thought into it, and I think doing all this work upfront, and it really was a huge effort, but doing it all now will make things much, much easier and go more smoothly when we're making choices and in design, and it really gives direction to our design team, so that we don't, so that we can continue to move forward, and especially with so many different stakeholder groups, they, you know, can know what we're, what our expectations are, so.
No, looks super.
Thanks.
And also... And also thanks both to you, Emily, and CAP staff who are not here for putting together really good request for commission and action forms that you can actually read and know what it is that we're taking action on. So that's excellent. Well, if there's no more public comment at this time, as we mentioned, the public comment period will be open through May 17th when we'll reconvene and take this item up. And is there any other business at the commission? Okay, thanks everyone for sticking it out, we'll be in recess.